Guys, okay. Good evening and welcome to our last virtual meeting as long as COVID doesn't make its ugly return. Director Austin is in at the library per government regulations and the rest of us are on Zoom. All the announcements have been posted. And so I would like to call the meeting of the Wilmette Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, Director?
Sure, I should say that this is Tuesday, March 15th and it is 6:32 PM. Here are our trustees, Trustee Fishman.
Here.
Trustee Nealan.
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Here.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Here.
Trustee Wolf. Trustee Wolf. We see you. He's connecting his audio. All right, and Trustee McDonald.
Okay.
Okay, I also noticed that we are joined by Elizabeth Seager from the League of Women Voters. And I see several staff members on our call as well. I see Jessica Thompson, Lenaya Lundberg, Marty Bellefontaine, Marcos Levy, Kim Haglund, and John Risco. And I'm Anthony Austin, Director of the Library.
So thank you for the roll call. So at this time, if there's any public that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, being no raised hands, we would like to move on for approval of the minutes from February 15th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I motion for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from February 15th, 2022 as presented.
Okay, sir, a second.
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Trustee Summer and seconded by Trustee Fishman to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 15th, 2022 as presented. Is there any discussion? Or questions regarding the minutes? Okay, be can Director Austin, can we have a roll called?
Certainly. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealan.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf. Raise your hand to say aye. Stuart is a yes and Trustee McDonald.
Yes, thank you. At this time, there are no presentations, so we will move on to report. Treasurer Summer.
Good evening. I just have a couple of comments and if anyone has any questions, just either raise your hand Stuart or indicate. If you read through the footnotes, we are still running slightly below the expected eight month rate. In the second paragraph of the footnotes, it did say, one of the lines said seventh month, but it actually should say eighth month. PPRT, which is a replacement tax, which I talked about last month, it continues to run well ahead of budget. The amount we received in March was about $23,000, which covers January and February of 2022. If anybody wants to know anymore about it, John Risco and I did a little deep dive into exactly what it can, how it's calculated. But if not, we can continue on. All right, everybody's nodding. It sounds good. As indicated in the notes, there's a check to Shels McNutt and about $60,000. The project's still running under budget and it is, as in the director's notes, substantially complete. Also in the footnote, CD rates are rising, which is great news for our investment. And my last comment is, in the last paragraph of the financial notes, we note that we have a net loss of 1.7 million, but keep in mind that includes the dispersments from the special reserve funds. And if you look at the prior financial statement as of the end of January, the year-to-date loss is about $375,000 less than as of the end of January, mostly due to the receipt of real estate taxes. Did anyone have any questions on any checks, any dispersments, any of the notes? Any anything regarding the financials? All right, does anyone, could someone please have a motion to approve the bills and salaries?
I motion we approve the bills and salaries for the current meeting, current month.
Yep, for February 20, the checks in.
February, yes, February 2022.
A second.
Thank you, Joan. Anthony or Director Austin, I think you need to do a roll call, please.
Sure, is there any other discussion? Okay, if no discussion, we'll go to a roll call. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealan.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf.
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald.
Yes, so the motion was moved by Trustee Wolf and seconded by Trustee Fishman. And six out of the six trustees present voted yes. At this point, we move to the action item. And last, last month, we met in special session to review, to evaluate Director Austin and to suggest and to recommend a salary. At that time, we came back. It was unanimous in the closed meeting and we reconvened an open meeting. However, we did not ratify his salary in open meeting. And so at this time, what I would like to do is, what we did was basically we, what our recommendation was in terms of what we want to ratify is to increase the director's compensation by 5% to 138,600 retroactive from July 1st, 2021. And we also agreed to review the director's salary on an annual basis in conjunction with the start of each physical year. And we just commended Director Austin for a wonderful job. So in terms of many of the things that he has done in spite of COVID. So at this time, can we have someone move to approve and ratify increasing a motion?
I move to approve and ratify increasing the director's salary, consistent with the summary discussion at the last board meeting.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay. So it's been moved by Trustee Summer and seconded by Trustee Wolf to approve and ratify increasing the director's salary, consistent with the summary discussion of the last board meeting. Can we have a roll call?
Certainly, Trustee.
Wait a minute, is there any discussion before we move on? Okay, being none, you are move on. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealan.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf.
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald.
Yes. Thank you. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Director Austin for the capital repairs project update.
Okay, thank you. So last Friday, we had a late start. We opened to the public at noon on Friday and that was to complete our fire safety system tests and inspections that have been on our schedule for quite some time when we were finally able to get all the sources coordinated and complete that process. We passed our inspections, we passed our tests. And the staff had their building evacuation drill and was able to successfully accomplish their normal procedures. This was the first such safety drill that we've been able to conduct as a team since COVID. So it was good for us to get refreshed on that and we've got a number of new staff. So it was their first opportunity to go through some of those fire exits and whatnot. And it was also our first opportunity for staff to hear and experience the new fire alarm system and announcements. So overall, it was a really successful day for us in terms of that morning and accomplishing a lot of the goals on this project. A real critical step forward for us in passing those inspections. There are a couple inspections that do remain. And that is really to test the electrical systems. They require a final test and inspection. And so that's going to be done before public hours and shouldn't affect staff or our operations as we're going to complete that likely before 8:30 sometime in the course of the next two weeks, as soon as they can coordinate that again with a number of the skilled trades that are going to be joining us for that. Once that aspect is complete, the final punch list will be reviewed again. And I think that we're going to be very darn near close to having this thing finalized. We do keep a little retainage in order for us to hold on to our contractors in order to get the project finalized and to be able to close everything out. So we're hoping by the time we meet for next month's meeting that we'll be able to tell you that everything has been officially buttoned up on this project. And we can put our 2021 capital repair project behind us. We've accomplished an awful lot with that project and I will provide a summary report for you about everything that we've accomplished once everything is finalized. Do you all have any questions about where we're at right now regarding the capital repair project? Okay. All right.
So all the alarms are in now and they work.
That is correct.
Good.
Now I just lost, dropped my thing. So wait one minute, boom. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to do a brief update of our strategic planning retreat that we had last Thursday at the Lakeview Center. It was the first time, I think in the 10 years that I've been here, that we had the one opportunity to meet with all the department heads. All the, oh, what do you, the leadership team, I'm sorry, we're going to call it right, the leadership team. And all the trustees were present and we had two observers from the League of Women voted. The order of the day was basically, we got to know each other a little, a little better from a exercise where there were some interesting questions asked. Director Austin gave us a wonderful update of trends and of what's happening at Wilmette Public Library over the last several years. And then after that, we broke up into groups. No, after that, we had department updates where department, we got to know a little bit more about department, the departments. And all the key departments were represented. But more important, we got to know their pain points in terms of, to sort of help us shape some of our goals for the strategic plan. Following that, we had an aspiration exercise and then we had debrief. And so what the next steps are is Director Austin has gotten together all the notes. I know two of the trustees have sent him their notes. And he will put, as well as the staff, and he will put together a summary of all our discussions as to what were some of the key objectives that we wanted to occur based on the aspiration exercise. Also, just sort of look in terms of what's important things that a library should focus on, on the next three years. And I think that will sort of stem it. We also looked at what the village had done because they've gotten about roughly 500 responses in terms of what makes the village special to, you know, what our constituents value. So throughout that time, throughout this time, after we pull together the strategic plan and we will meet to discuss it, Director Austin is going to take a look because many of the objectives that we had in the strategic plan for the last five years are still relevant. It's these strategies and tactics that will be used in terms to achieve those objectives. And so at that point in time, a meeting will be held with trustees and selected leadership team members to just sort of look at the results from what was said and what was stated, as well as where we are and put together a draft. After we put together the draft of the strategic plan, we will then go look at those areas where it's important to get community input as to what their priorities are. And that will be done probably even after the strategic plan, after we look at some of the areas in terms of utilization of space programs and their priorities. So that's about it. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
So Lisa, just to clarify, we are going to have some ideas which would be more helpful to us to have public input and would help direct us a little more than just sort of being more vague, like, you know, what do you like about the library, you know?
No, that doesn't.
No, that would not be.
What, excuse me, what it'll be is say, for instance, you know, we'll do our, and the areas, you know, some are areas are internal, some of them you need the response. So say, for instance, if we're looking at space and space utilization, we will have done a space evaluation. And so we will, and then in terms of what might be, and then at that point in time, I think, and that will be probably after the strategic plan, but that's just an example. And I think the Park District has done a good job, Weneka has, Weneka Public Library has done a good job. And then ask them what their priorities are and how important is that? So I think it's easier to get the residents to respond to some actual ideas with the implications and the cost. As opposed to just asking vague questions as to what, you know, what makes it, you know, what makes it relevant? When you talk about diversity and inclusion and you want to see, which is one thing that they value, you know, you want the library to be a conduit to facilitate that so that you get a different response, you know, so that you get different opinions, how might the library do that? And so might have some, because I think the library does a pretty good job now in terms of, if you look at one book and the different, you know, last year, it looked at, you know, Chinatown and some of the perceptions of Chinese in the past, I know it's done immigrants and, you know, they've done a whole lot. But just looking at ways that we can maybe find ways to build communities. And so there are a whole lot of ideas and you all will have some more ideas. But I think that's a start. And then just getting to our patrons. And, you know, both in, when both in Kinnell Worth as well as Wilmette, what are their priorities? This is the stuff that they're interested in as opposed to us just assuming. Does that answer?
Yeah, I think we're on the, on the same wavelength with that.
Yeah, more specifics as opposed to broad, general, because I know the last times, you know, we've gotten very good reviews when we've done strategic plan in terms of, we did a survey and there was high levels of satisfaction. But I don't think we addressed how they might be more satisfied and we might appeal to their need, you know, appeal to their interest. And are there different ways?
Right, right, right. Okay.
Those are just some thoughts, but we'll talk about it when we all reconvene in terms of how we might engage the public a little bit more.
Thank you.
Okay, at this turn, time, we'll turn it over to Director Austin for the Finance Committee meeting and Treasurer Summer.
Sure, well, we're probably not taking any action on this here tonight, but we want to get it on your radar that it is budget season. And it's going to be very soon before we're going to be getting together as a finance committee to talk about our budget for fiscal year 2223. And so I wanted to get that, that on your radar. I'm going to be sending an email out to you here shortly with a doodle poll. When you get that email, I'd like you to respond as soon as you can so that we can get some schedules set up for a couple rounds of reviews of the draft budget. So internally, we're working on that right now and we're targeting early April for our first meeting to have that discussion so that we can summarize the information from that first meeting at our next regular board meeting next month on April 19th. So sometime between now and then, we'll get together as the finance committee. Stay tuned for more. Okay, anything else on that? Otherwise, I'll move on to my report. Okay. I don't have an awful lot to cover this evening. February is a little bit shorter month, but I'll summarize. I've pulled out maybe six key points from my director's report. And if you've got any questions or other items that you'd like to poll and discuss, we can certainly get into those as well. At our last meeting on the February 15th, we talked about a big event that happened that Saturday before. And it, it bears mention again tonight that on February 12th, we hosted Winterfest as part of the village's sesquicentennial celebration and we had over 1,000 attendees, or nearly 1,000 attendees rather, come to the library that day. It was a remarkable day of events and I've captured some of the information and some photos from that day in my report. And encourage you to take a look at that and see some of the events that we had. We're hoping that that is a signal of some future events that we're going to be hosting here in the future. And hopefully that means that folks are getting ready to come back. Related to that, in the last month, I've also noted that our trending for door counts has actually gone up by about 100 people per day. So we're starting to see more traffic inside the library, which is good news for us. And we've also been taking a number of steps to start making things look a little bit more like they were pre-pandemic. At least since February, on February 28th, the library, along with a number of other businesses, local institutions and statewide agencies, relaxed the mask mandate. Wilmette Library went to a masks recommended environment. We're, I'd say we're probably about 50/50 right now with the public when they're in the building. A number of our precautionary measures are evolving as we're, as we're kind of coming out of the pandemic right now. We're enjoying the fact that our community is largely vaccinated and has been very much compliant and respectful of one another when they've come in the building. That said, there are a number of ways that we can start to reintroduce a number of our services and spaces to the way that they were pre-pandemic. One of the changes that has taken place here in the last week or so is that a number of the acrylic barriers that we've had up at our service desks have come down. So if you've been in the library since this past weekend, you'll notice that the circulation desk is, is looking kind of spacious again. Our Plexiglas barrier is down there. And at a number, and actually, I think pretty much all of our service desks at this point have moved into that environment. We are going to start hosting programs more in person than we have. We're continuing to offer hybrid options. As Lisa said at the top of this call, we're planning to have this be the last remote meeting that we're having for the board. However, a number of the programs that the staff has scheduled will likely remain in a hybrid environment and even some of them will stay virtual for a period of time. Not all of the folks that we have contracted with for programming are ready to come back in person. Some of the events just don't translate very well to a virtual environment like, like music concerts and so on. And so we have elected to defer those until such a time that we can reschedule them and have them here in person. But we're starting to schedule more of those programs for the coming months to be in person. So we're excited about that. The newsletter for the next cycle, which covers April, May, will be in homes here shortly. And let's see, so that you'll, you'll see some of the programming listed there. I think one of the biggest highlights that we have for this past month was the launch of the RFID systems on our self-checkout machines. The staff created a really fun video around this. And we've had tremendous success with the staff and the public who've been using this product ever since we've launched it. On page six of my report, you can see the background information about the steps that were involved in getting it up and running and how it operates. Speaking of circulation, our circulation is trending rather positively. I would say at this point, based upon our measures, we are back to 88% of where we were pre-pandemic in terms of our circulation. So while our door counts are still about half of what we were pre-pandemic, circulation is still very strong and is improving. We currently have 14,380 registered cards here at Wilmette Library in a community of 9,717 households, which means that nearly every household in town has a library card, which is really remarkable. In addition to that, our staff and our public engagement rather with those library cards is really outstanding in that 68% of those cards have been used in just the last year alone. So high rates of engagement and that is certainly reflected in our circulation numbers. We had our winter reading program as well closed here in February on the 28th. And our numbers were fairly consistent with last year. Since some areas, they had improved. Well, they improved overall, but, but very small numbers nevertheless. It's a program I would like to see us continue to grow and build. Obviously, our summer reading program is are one of our signature events and is our biggest draw. We know a lot of folks do travel and have vacation plans during the winter, but that's no reason not to read. So we're going to see what we can do to motivate folks a bit more to participate in our program, whether it's through incentive prizes or just a little bit more publicity. So stay tuned for more on winter reading as we move forward. And then, so there's, there's some images from, from winter reading as well in my packet. The, the last item that I wanted to share with you is that we are actively recruiting for a member of our leadership team. The digital services manager position is posted and is open through the end of the month. We're really excited about this opportunity. It's a tremendous opportunity for the library and for our department. As we really see a lot of potential for us to innovate and grow in that capacity with our new leader in that role. That concludes kind of an overview of my report. Do you all have anything that you have questions about from my report or otherwise?
At this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that led now to an update on the ILA and rails and we'll turn it over to Trustee Nealan. Trustee Nealan, I need you to unmute. Thank you.
Is it nice done to be the only one, Stuart? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I put together two basically really helpful webpages on the legislative activity or basically bills going through both Illinois State Legislature and federal bills that can benefit libraries. And in Illinois, I believe, and Anthony corrected wrong, I think there is a bill on, oh my gosh, now I totally need my notes. Hold on a minute. All right, yes, state of Illinois legislation, a broadband for, you know, to connect some libraries that are in need of that and on ebook pricing, which is a situation that is, you know, of concern. And then in the federal area, there are giant acts going on, American Rescue Plan Act, Build America's Libraries Act and Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, all of which have implications for libraries. So I have a little cheat sheet I just threw together that I'm able to send the trustees. I just pulled it off the ILA website, but it's all in one place. So I'll send that out to you. And if you have friends that are interested in doing witness slips or talking to congresspeople, these are very worthwhile topics in our area. So that's what I want to share and I'll send that out right after this meeting.
Director Austin, is there any way we would ever put that, those bills in terms of that are impacting library and usage on our website? Or is that not?
I'm not sure in terms of advocacy, if these are, if these are topics that are immediately directly affecting us in a, in a substantial way. eBook price, I mean, the library clearly has its broadband networking finite. That's, I think a number of other agencies are challenged in that way. eBook pricing affects all libraries. So the Equitable Access to Electronic Literature Act is what Trustee Nealan was referring to. There's, this is a national issue and there are a lot of, a lot of matters that are of concern with the pricing for ebooks. So I do think that that, that is one area that we're concerned. But it is not such that it's affecting the funding of the library. So I don't know that that's an issue that we necessarily need to get our community rallying behind us in terms of an advocacy. I think the impacts locally are less substantial here than they may be with some other districts.
Thank you. Do you want to continue? Both Trustee Nealan and Wolf attended the final meeting.
Intergovernmental. Trustee Wolf, are you here? Do you want to, do you want to pick that up?
Oh, unmute Stuart.
Oh, unmute again. Oh my God.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, how about now? Yes, you hear me? You're good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so yes, it was a very, it was a very good meeting, a very productive meeting. Kate Jaya, who chairs it, made sure, she said it an hour and we were done in less than an hour. And we basically, the combined boards from across the village entities in talking about ways to focus on green initiatives and, 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 and things related to that. The consensus was to try to, to look into the possibility of getting a, a part-time paid person who would work maybe at the village, but kind of coordinate all the efforts among the different village entities so that we're not being redundant and in essence can kind of support one another and what we're doing and how we're doing it. So that's where things stand right now is, is Mike Bremen is with. So that's where things stand right now is, is, um, uh, Mike, uh, Berman is looking into the, the, um, the, uh, looking into other, other villages and what they've done that we could possibly, uh, use a similar type model. Uh, and the other thing that came up too was the idea of working on an, on a focus to, what can we do to, to encourage civility? Between interactions between, um, the public and the various boards in the village. And also I think between, uh, board members themselves. So it was kind of the ideas that we, obviously in the culture we're in right now, there has been kind of a trend away from being civil and, and what can we do to set good examples and, and, and good, comfortable environments to, to exchange ideas and hear one another and again lead to, uh, to, to very positive discourse, constructive versus destructive discourse.
Well, thank you both for serving on that committee. Does anyone have any other questions for? Director Wolf, okay.
I do want to say if, if anybody, any of our, um, trustees have, um, content areas to suggest. Now, I think, um, Kate Jaya has the idea of having these big areas to look at first, like sustainability. And then we might move on to, um, just other areas like I, um, that are, uh, I suppose civility could be another area, but if you have other ideas, like just please share them with, with Stuart and, and myself.
Okay, Director Austin, do you have anything to add regarding rails? Okay, he has nothing. Okay, we're going to switch on now to, uh, information items, communications. You all, all that, uh, from one of our patrons regarding the tree and mulch in terms of it being the volcano. And so Shalay will be coming and so, uh, it, Marcos will be discussing it with them. So it will be handled that way. Do you have anything else to add, Director Austin, in terms of comments? Okay.
There's one question, I, um, um, I hope, when I, when I, I sent a board related, uh, you know, comment about it, just to make sure that we responded to this patron. Um, I didn't keep that patron in the email conversations. So did you Lisa or you Anthony?
Austin, Director Austin will respond to him.
Okay, good. I assume so, but I just want to make sure that that was, I didn't mean to confuse.
No, it didn't slip through.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or communications that you've gotten, Director Austin? Okay, moving on, uh, you'll be at the PLA from March 22nd to 26th in Portland, Oregon. How many staff will be attending it remotely, virtually?
Um, I'm, I'm aware of one. There, there may be others that are still coming. And it's open to trustees as well, although, although I did say that there aren't any specific programs that are oriented towards trustees at PLA this time around. ILA typically does a better job of getting the trustee-related programming. However, if you, if you go to the website and you see some programs of interest, um, you're more than welcome to attend. Just let me know and I can get you registered.
I sent you all a notice regarding United for Libraries and a lot of times, United for Libraries are basically for, and the trustees. And a lot of times they would have separate meetings at the American Library Association. So if you need me to resend it, I've signed up to take two of the courses, but they do something every month that pertains to trustees. So I can resend that to you all. Thank you. Okay, the village of Willmet is celebrating its 150th birthday. And so at this point in time, they're looking for sponsors for bricks or trees. If anybody needs me to send information to them, I will. And at the end of this month, they're going to have their, uh, interdenominational choir. And so the library will be promoting it. And so the library is working hand in hand, especially Eva, who is in charge of genealogy. And so what they've been doing is with a historical society, they've put together a kit, because we talked about it, but they've got a kit that you can check out and do interviews with the digital and then it, and they will find a way to, I think, put them all together and make them public. So that's what's happening there. And if you just go to the website page, which is listed in the agenda, you can see everything on, that's happening there. Okay. And then, uh, do you want to talk about one book everyone reads, Director Austin?
I would just say, stay tuned for, um, the information is going to be in the next newsletter. Um, telling you more about the programming that we have associated with our one book title, Three Girls from Bronzeville by Dawn Turner.
Okay, is there any new?
Comment, if no one is, if I, I actually, is anyone, I read the book, it is excellent. And I'm going to encourage all the trustees to also read it. It's quite good. I think it's really good, particularly, you know, living up here in a very, not a culturally diverse community, understanding what, you know, what life is like in other people around Chicago. So.
I enjoyed the book because I know the author, because her father-in-law, who she talks about was my father's good friend. And so it was fascinating to learn about he and his wife. Because it was just a, and, but what I most enjoyed about the book was how two kids from the same family turn out so differently. So I think we all can.
Yep.
Relate to that. So I'm looking forward to all the things you got in. Okay, any other new business?
I was going to say, I enjoyed it too. So looking forward to her presentation.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I will motion to adjourn.
Okay, Stuart has mo, has motion to adjourn the meeting for the Willmet Public Library at 7:08. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Wolf and seconded by trustee Fishman to move, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? I don't think we have to have a roll call. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Those opposed, it was unanimous. Have a good evening and we adjourned at 7:08.
This is the shortest move, uh, meeting I've ever been a part of is a board.